And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera and the council chambers are set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledgeable agents. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally.
Here.
Councillor Dillaba.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Reisch. Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
We have one presentation tonight from City Councilor Angela Gray.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to give you a final update on sales tax for the 2023 year. And where we have landed for 2023 is our average monthly collections have come in slightly above budget at $224 per month, and we had budgeted around $217 per month. The charts in front of you go through the month of November 2023 only. That's what was available at the time of printing. And we're starting to see the December money roll in around the same levels as November, so that's promising. Our budget in 2024 is based on $2.52 million. So even using the 2023 average collected, it's on par, maybe slightly below where we have seen our 2023 numbers. So I just wanted to update you on that and
I always have a question.
Sure.
October is kind of strange. $64,000 last October, and this year it was $356,000. There's no rhyme or reason for that.
There isn't, other than councillor, in that first year where the bars are green, that was sort of our year out of the gates where the state was still trying to figure out what our formula would be through its sort of actuarially done. And so the month of October would have been a corrective month. And what we're hoping to see ongoing, and which we have seen, is that there's the highs and the lows are less volatile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one public hearing tonight regarding an ordinance amending Chapter 189 entitled Streets and Sidewalks of the Code of the City of Augsburg. It is going to be Bill Number 116, and I will open that up to public hearing now. Anyone attending in person would like to speak, come down to the podium, you have five minutes. Is there anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
I declare this public hearing closed. And this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, councillors. Just want to get my five minutes started here. There we go. My name's Nick Wright. I'm originally a citizen of Augsburg. I was born and raised here. I still have a lot of family here. In fact, my two daughters, my three daughters, rather, still come here during the summertime to spend the time on the river with my parents. I'm returning tonight, as you guys probably already know, I know most of you. I've contacted you all by email to put forward a project called Mystic Springs Adventure Golf. I don't want to get into too much of my background, as I feel like the project deserves the attention that I expect, the amount of time that I have to give it. So briefly, I'll just say the last, one of the last times I was in this auditorium was when it was a stage, and Ruth Lucky was running the Boys and Girls Club. And I was seven years old and I had lost my two front teeth. And unbeknownst to my parents, she had me come out and say, "Alls I want for Christmas is my two front teeth." So that's what I remember of these rooms. Anyway, with this project, it's a $600,000 project, and it would be slated as a regional attraction. I come from about 20 years of experience in the themed entertainment industry, as well as family entertainment. And when you look at your numbers in this area, the numbers of residents and people within St. Louis County, 180,000, within a 30-mile radius, when you drop the pin at the bridge approach, 195,000, and then within a 50-mile radius of the bridge approach, 1.7 billion people. When you look at Augsburg, the way I have the last few years, I want to, I want to give something back. I want, I want to do something right. We have began, we have begun to pursue a project of the same size, except indoor in Southern Maine. And obviously, a natural approach for what we want to do with our company is to build one in Augsburg, my hometown. How committed am I to hometown? My daughters just purchased me a plot at the Augsburg Cemetery next door. So that's commitment. So I'm here because I would like to proceed with this project. I touched a little bit upon the actual project itself. I would like the opportunity here in the near future to be able to make that presentation, because again, I believe that it deserves that type of attention. I appreciate people who have come here tonight that have reached out to me behind the scenes to let me know that they would be here. From an economic standpoint, just got to check my time here. We're looking at probably six to 10 part-time seasonal jobs and two full-time seasonal jobs. The course itself would operate from May 1st to the beginning of September. That would be seven days a week. And then October, November, excuse me, September, October would be weekends only, with two special events built into that course. Meaning, kind of along the lines of your, like your holiday light shows that you've seen in the area that are getting popular, those would be actually be able to build into the park and then taken down out of the park. We would probably do something more like Fourth of July, as to not to interrupt the other businesses in the area. This, this particular business, I believe, at, for instance, birthday parties, special events, we would want to have the restaurants in Augsburg cater to those, directly to those customers that would have the special events there. I believe that this is a, a, first of all, it's a very personal project to me. Second of all, I need another excuse to get back here and see my alien mom and my father. And I'm actually going to dedicate this to them if this happens. And finally, I'll just say, I know that you guys all received my email today. I put an offer in on Part B for $10,000. And I'm asking you to begin to take immediate action to get that ball rolling as far as that goes. As far as my builders go, timing is kind of working against me now. The, the actual whole builder, the mini golf developer, is now being added to a second course in Geneva where he's working right now, the State Park Day. So we're now probably into mid-June, mid to late June, to get him over here to actually do the courses. As far as the landscaping and excavation goes, that would all be local contractors. So I appreciate your time. I really want to be able to do that presentation for you, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
William Hosmer, 507 Elizabeth Street. Just wanted to clear up, I think there's been some miscommunication about our piece of the property. A few weeks back, or a month or so ago, we sent an email looking into waive the clause, the three-year clause. We weren't asking to sell it back to the city despite the resolution. And I brought the emails to prove that. We are looking at another site for the brewery. We have a tentative agreement, nothing is confirmed. We have not finalized the, the plan yet. So we technically still have a year and a half before we need to sell it back to the city. I've always said that if there was another developer that could develop that piece of property, we would, we would stand out of the way. And when Mr. Wright approached me, I consulted with my investors in the brewery, and we agreed to that it would be worthwhile to step out of his way for this project. It would have a huge economic impact on the community of Augsburg. Not only the restaurants, but it would bring people to this area, it would allow them to stay here. We've been looking for an attraction in this area. And I believe this could be the start of a change of direction for our community. Let me just make sure I got everything here. So I think at this point, until all the information has been received, it might be best to table this resolution until maybe you invite Mr. Wright to give a presentation, and we continue to get all the facts. And so I would ask you, moving forward, to invite Mr. Wright for a presentation and to table the resolution to buy back this property from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Good evening, I'm Michael Tulley, I live in the city, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. At the July 24 council meeting, I asked you to update the public about plans to fill the vacant city manager position. Council restated that the process would begin in August. Interim City Manager Andrea Smith stated the process would begin in the fall, along with development of the budget. I believe tonight's meeting is the last regular city council meeting in 2023. And I know no agenda, I am dealing with the appointment of the city manager. So unless you plan to make an appointment after an executive session tonight, are there plans to schedule a special city council meeting by December 31st to appoint a city manager? Think the public would like an update on this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening, John Winter, 515 Ford Street. I want to applaud any private developer that comes into town to develop a property with his own money, his or her own money. And I think the city ought to support that development, because I don't know, I don't think we're going to have a big industry to come into town. And I'm not saying this is a magic bullet, but this is something that can be something positive for the city. And I don't think Nick is asking any money from the city, just asking for some cooperation. And I'm not certain what, if there's any roadblocks in his way, but I would suggest strongly that the city work with private developers and get those roadblocks out of their way so that they could develop this. Because again, is this a magic bullet? No, but it's something, it's a start, it is private money. And again, I don't know what the agreement is between Billy Hosmer and the city. But whatever there is, any flexibility in there to, to get those things out of the way and make this thing happen, so Nick can get this development started. Contractors are tough, they're tough to come by, they're busy, they're planning their seasons out ahead of time, obviously, we all know that. So, you know, as quickly and expediently as you can, I would, I would strongly suggest that you, you know, knock the roadblocks down so we can come in and get this project underway. And, you know, any other private developers, long as it's legal, let them go, let them have it, let them do it, let them succeed. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence, Kathy?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda, that the claims is enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number 22-2023, in the amount of $472,560.06 and Library Warrant Number 22-2023, in the amount of $0. And Capital Fund Warrant Number 22-2023, in the amount of $47,303.61 and Community Development Fund Warrant Number 22-2023, in the amount of $75.98 and Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 22-2023, in the amount of $0, as audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid. I so move. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch. Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
We have one appointment tonight, and I will make a motion to appoint James LaFave to fill the unexpired term of Michael Weaver on the planning board, term to begin December 11th, 2023, and end December 34, 31st, 2024. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by City Manager Andrea Smith.
This is an ordinance amending Chapter 189 entitled Streets and Sidewalk of the Code of the City of Augsburg.
Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by City Manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to accept the Department of Justice COPS Grant Hiring Grant Award.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
A year, each year for three?
It's an award of up to $250,000 to offset expenses associated with hiring two new law enforcement officers. And it is valid, I believe, for three or five years, actually.
The, the funding has to be utilized during the course of five years, but the salary itself is to be, is for three years' worth of salary. But the $250 is total for, for the two officers. Salary and benefits. It's three-quarters pay. Is what it is, three-quarters pay.
Our next item of business will be read by City Clerk Kathy Jock.
This is a resolution appointing City Clerk Kathy Jock as a marriage officer.
I'll move that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Andrea Smith.
It's a resolution exempting the position of clerk from the hiring freeze. Whereas the position of clerk will be vacant following a resignation, which is effective December 15th, 2023, and whereas this position is a shared position between the Departments of Code Enforcement and Assessment, and is included within the approved 2024 budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the Augsburg City Council hereby approves exempting the position of clerk from the hiring freeze and approves the filling of this position immediately.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution exempting the position of city maintenance worker and water wastewater treatment plant operator trainee from the hiring freeze.
So is this one maintenance worker at TPW?
There are two open positions in the Department of Public Works under the title of city maintenance worker. And both of them are in the approved 2024 budget.
Wait, water wastewater treatment plant operator trainee? That person retired?
Correct. We have two upcoming retirements in January.
Thanks. This person will be getting trained by Dank, correct? Or any of these two classes?
There are certifications that are required, and Dank does assist the city with that.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Councilor Angela Gray.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to transfer funds to balance the 2023 budget.
I'll move that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Approved.
Angela Gray, would you please read the next one?
Sure, this is a resolution to establish a reserve for repairs in each of the respective funds, the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer funds.
I'll move that.
This is, this is per the afterallers guidance and stuff. Is that where that came from?
It's a requirement in the 2024 budget, there's about $95,000 between the three funds. That's set as an appropriation to be transferred into a reserve. In order to go to that reserve, council has to authorize the reserve to do such.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Mayor Scally.
Yes.
Councillor Dillaba.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to acquire property at 17 Main Street in accordance with the restrictive covenant.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Reisch.
On the amendment, right?
This is to table.
Yeah, just for discussion purposes, is that what we want to do here? I think you should just hold it now till we figure out what's going on, actually. You have to write the opportunity for something.
It has not been introduced, so therefore it cannot be tabled. So it should either be not introduced, it should either not be introduced, or it should be introduced, and then the motion to table. We're a little ahead of ourselves here.
If it's not introduced, you can just call it like Councillor Scamperley.
No, so Kathy's saying it has not been moved or seconded, so, correct.
Vote to remove.
Just, if you, if you opt to not introduce it, then it just does not get introduced.
Okay, then we'll move that. And this brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business? And this brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business?
So tonight, we obviously have a developer that wants to leave on parcel B for Main Street. There's probably discussion on how that sale goes. Hasn't worked before. What happened to it? What's the process for moving forward on parcel B, potentially to sell it to somebody?
So in accordance with the request for proposals that was accepted by the city council, parcel B was held in reserve to be sold to the freeries. So before the council could act on any proposal that is not in concert with the proposal as part of the RFP process, we would need to reach out to the freeries and or put it up for a, through a public process, either a new RFP or a public auction.
I think we should do that soon. Whatever it is. Was there a time limit on holding it?
No, sir.
Okay. So I think whatever we can do to extend the process one way or another, the city should do, my thoughts.
My opinion hasn't changed, that our code is very specific and says when you're disposing of public property, it needs to go to public auction. And I guess we bent the rules, and it was the majority's decision to do an RFP before, and that's kind of why we find ourselves in this position. I'm, I just think when you dispose of public lands, you should do it at public auction. Unless you want to change the code.
I don't think we need to do is talk to freeries and see what. And technically, we can sell the property, correct? Especially if we promised it to freeries to begin with.
So the RFP was submitted on behalf of River Street Brewing, where they revised their initial proposal, seeking the whole parcel. They came back to council and said they only needed a portion for their project, which would allow the city to continue to have discussions with the freeries who were at that time interested. I haven't spoken to them today about where their project is, but that was part of the proposal when it was accepted by council. So I think before we would move to a public auction or any other form of sale, we would, we would owe it to them to reach out and find out where they're at with their project. There were a list of items that we needed to see from them, including a timeline and site plan approval for their end of the proposal. So they would still need to comply with those requirements before the sale would be finalized, but I think that would definitely be step one.
I'm sure we've seen it, can we all get a copy of that? Where the stipulations are?
And that brings us to items for discussion. Does anyone have any items for discussion? And that brings us to citizen participation. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium, you have two minutes.
I'm here to just thank the council, the firemen, the police department, all our guys that did all that wonderful work for those Toys for Tots. And I hope that you guys will continue to let it happen. You made a bunch of little kids very, very happy. And also, I have known this woman, Kathy Jock, a long time. And I want to give her credit where credit is due. Since you have been city clerk, you have done a marvelous job. And I hope you continue, and I hope everything goes well for you, Kathy, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Senator.
Is there?
Just going to ask this question, I'm just a little confused on what the next steps are. It sounds like you're going to speak with the freeries to see if they're still interested. And I assume at that point someone's going to reach out to Mr. Wright. Can we have that commitment that we're going to have some communication moving forward? Obviously, he's on a timeline to get this done. I understand things have to be done in a certain process in a legal way. All we're asking for is some communication from the city as to what's going on moving forward, and not wait until the next meeting where we have to do this again. Thank you.
Is there anyone remotely attending?
I do not see any hands raised.
We do not have a need for executive session, so I will make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Foes. Meeting adjourned.